Ridge in on the, I say the ridge, see, kind of look down over the valley and if there were no chill, I wasn't ready to see you.
Ready? Guys all set? Elijah's not gonna be here and Patrick is gonna be late and online. So.
Recording in progress.
All right. Calling to order, the City of Essex Junction Planning Commission meeting for June 6th. The time is 6:32. Any agenda additions or changes that need to be made?
Under member updates, I'll give an update on the climate action plan. What's going on, because there's some really relevant things. In the city of Essex Junction.
Perfect.
Introduction.
I'd like to see if we could add a subtopic under Land Development Code amendments. So this is related to the Vermont Homes For All Initiative. And what's, a conference that both Michael and I attended yesterday. And how that could relate to some land development code amendments that the commission may want to consider.
Do you want to add that?
Maybe at the end.
At the end?
Of the Land Development Code. So, yeah, still, it's still 5B, but.
After the density limit?
I just.
Discussion?
Two beats. Um, yeah.
Yeah. Any other changes? Moving on to comments from the public on items not on the agenda, there are currently no one, there's no one in the room. Is there anyone online?
There is, Lexi is online.
All right. Um, Lexi, if you have a comment that for something that's not on the agenda, feel free to raise your hand or let us know. Otherwise, we can move on. All right. Moving on to the minutes from April 4th. We'll need a motion to approve the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes? No, I didn't have anything either. All in favor of approving the minutes as written? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, moving on to the business items. A, new city planner.
Hi, everyone. I'm the new city planner here. My name's Michael Jagir. Prior to this, worked as a craft brewing professional, doing mostly microbiological work. But urban planning's been a passion project of mine for a long time. Really excited to work with Chris and see what we're able to do. So. Yeah, gonna be, you know, doing a lot of observations and probably asking questions, but excited to dive in.
I would note there were over 50 applicants for this round of hiring. And Michael stood out as the, as the best candidates we could find. So. Michael was a part of the Bike Walk Advisory Committee. But now that he is on the staff, he is no longer on that committee. But he will be involved in staffing that committee.
Great, well, welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to Land Development Code amendments. Leave it to you, Chris.
All right. So, yeah, Land Development Code amendments have been something that, that the commission has been working on for a while now. And there are, the, the thing that kicked it off where, was a need to amend design regulations to be content neutral, I think. For the most part, commissions, it sounds like the commission has got, is comfortable with, with what's in the draft. And I'll note that in this latest version, which you, you all have Microsoft Word version of it, with track changes turned on. There, there have been no additional changes since it was last discussed. There was, so I'll just go over all the, all the topics that, that's uh, we have talked about in the past first before going on to new ones. The approval of temporary uses as it relates to food trucks and trailers. This was discussed last time in April. And there was a proposal to add a tweak that would allow for year-round operations of the food trucks and trailers. I'll note that there have been food trucks and trailers that have been operating in the past, but like from a literal read of the Land Development Code, that, that was not possible, was not possible to issue a temporary use permit, one after another, when each one only lasted six months. So there was some text in there. I, the, the main thing is that consecutive renewals would be allowed. Your pending staff review, if it doesn't cause problems around it. Around that area. There was one recent case that I thought is, is, is worth noting right here. There was a complaint about noise coming from a food truck that has temporary use permits. And it, the noise came from a gas generator that, that it was using the whole time it was operating. I think that maybe it may be worth considering some regulation on that.
Well, I guess my question would be, was, was there a sound, sound reading taken? Because we do have the sound ordinance, and if it's coming, if that's what I'm looking at right now, if that's the generator that's in a commercial area, which puts it in a totally different sound, sound than it does in a residential area. So, although residential is across the street, so.
That's.
Sound reading taken?
A sound reading was not taken, but I did take a video with sound. Oh, it doesn't work this way. Scott, when I was playing it, the sound wasn't coming through. Is there a way to? Okay, well, I, I can, I can describe, I can describe the sound as very loud.
Is it up there with the, the trucks that backfire on a regular basis that are?
Well, I mean, this is more, I think the difference is this is an, that's an instantaneous reading.
This one's constant.
This is constant.
So they have it on the whole time?
They're, the whole time they're operating, they have it on. My experience from other cities with a lot of food trucks, you know, living in Portland, which I, I think many would consider a pioneer in, in, in food truck policy and allowing food, food truck kind of clusters and villages as well. They, they require the, these food trucks be plugged in. And for the most part, they are. This, this one is an exception. I, and yeah, I think it's
Where could he?
Worth considering. What was that?
Where could he plug in?
He wouldn't be able to at his current location unless unless there, there was some infrastructure built there.
So does each food truck get a permit for that specific location?
Yes.
Just, okay, so he's got one for that particular place?
Yes.
I mean, my first thought is that this is, seems more of a nuisance, nuisance issue, like a noise, it's a noise nuisance, a noise ordinance. And I don't know if we regulate noise or sound anywhere else in the LDC.
We do, actually. It's under performance standards. I think, I mean, sound can be regulated as, like, it already says you have to meet everything else that's in the, the permit says that, and you have to meet all the other requirements, but enforcement is a little bit difficult. We have to go out there at the right time with a sound meter. If we know they're using a generator and whether or not it's noisy, it is, it is, like, you're not even allowed to idle a car for over a certain amount of time. It, it seems to me that that's in, in urbanized area where electricity is readily available. Is a little strange that, that, you know, food trucks would be cited in a way that requires a constant use of a generator.
Yeah. Is it feasible to plug in? Do you know? Like, is that what they do over here?
That's what they do there. That's even the, the one at the Essex Automotive Shop. The muffler shop where there's always the hot dog bratwurst cart over there. They have electricity available, custom, custom made, I think, for a food cart over there.
I think it makes sense. I mean, they can always, you can always get electric generators too.
Right.
Those backup.
Yeah.
Power supplies.
And some carts don't require electricity, you know, they use, you know, gas, propane for, for cooking, but some they have some way of keeping things cold or, or whatever else they need.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. I mean, my first thought when I saw that on the agenda was it was gonna be pollution wise, not noise. I thought it was just gonna be like fumes.
The complaint we received was about noise, but I do think it's, it, it is related, like it, it's, generators are generally not the, the you know, got the best emissions control.
Yeah. I, I would be in favor of adding something about noise or maybe even saying that you need to be plugged in. Especially if we're gonna say, if we're saying that you can nab it year-round essentially. With continuous extensions, the idea is, as long as you haven't
The other part is that there's the regulation about idling engines. That one seems to be, would be idling for a while.
Right.
That, that might.
Yeah, that's what I mean, regardless of the noise, I wouldn't, I don't think we would want a generator to just be idling all day.
Okay.
This would apply also to speed fairs and stuff like that, where you have temporary, like a six-hour use of a jet.
Well, is, is there a
I mean, I would say.
I think there could be limits on how temporary, how temporarily you could use generators. I, I can imagine that might be good policy. I, I don't know if I can't think of any situation where it would make sense to, you know, to, to have a lot, have food trucks constantly running, running generators, but if it's not for half a year at a time.
Yeah, but I'm also thinking, say, say, for example, you had a, a food fair on, on railroad street with music or something like that. You also don't want a generator running when you have music going or something like that. I think that would be a nuisance as well.
Well, it probably would be. I'm trying to think of, because I was part of the farmer's market, Chris, and I'm trying to think of, there was a guy that brought food down and it was frozen. And he had a trailer, but I don't remember him having a generator because we had access to electricity.
Right.
For various businesses. So there was that availability to plug in, even on railroad over there. So it wasn't that somebody happened to have, and of course, we had music and food, oh gosh, it got to the point of three quarters of it, I think, was food vendors. So. So I'm trying to think of when, when somebody would be using, because people were selling hot food at, at this event. So I don't remember any generators when they were.
I think it's pretty rare. I, I am trying to think about if there's a situation where it would make sense. Maybe for a limited amount of time and perhaps it, I, I haven't proposed any specific wording and I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not thinking that the committee would think of specific wording right now. I can do a little bit more research and make something up that, that seems to make sense to me and see what you think. But I, I can't think of any reason why it, it would make sense to allow generators at all at the moment, but if you could think of any, I would love to hear.
Well, I can see why this guy's using one because there isn't any, like, the parking lot's not electrified. And I think last time there were, we had electricity come down, the electric poles and whatnot, to come down as opposed to. And he's not near a, any one of those streetlights that are in there. He's out near the street. Now, the guy that's in the Pearl Street at the Sausage Sack Shack. Yes, there is an implanted in the ground electric on, you know, you can plug in. So, but it was set that way. So, you know, either you could say that the landlord needs to provide that, or they need to work something out. Because I'm trying to think of.
Or he needs to move.
Or he needs to, you know, across the street that, there used to be a farmer's market sort of thing going on at the other shopping center across the way. And I'm trying to think if there is, if there's any electrification in that tree strip that's along Pearl Street. Because they're, they too had vendors there, and I don't know if people had boxed hot food or what exactly they did. It's been decades since that occurred. And I don't remember. I wasn't part of that effort.
Philip, I've just notes that Sean Handy is now online. He doesn't have his hand up or anything, he's just there.
So should we just say that temporarily right now, we're, we're opposed to any generators?
Yep.
And you'll consider this and come back to this?
Yep, I can absolutely do that.
I don't understand why, like, a backup electric power supply wouldn't be enough to do what they would need to be doing. I assume it's to run like
Fridge.
A fridge or a computer or something like that to take payment, but.
Depends on what, what's electrified and is or not. Maybe his, his air conditioner. Since he's in the kitchen.
Okay, so the next item we have here is tandem parking spaces, this was previously considered in April. You asked whether or not a length of 34 feet was really necessary, given that some cars are shorter, but I, I did a little review of other, what other Chittenden County municipalities are doing and 34 was very common and also unfortunately cars are, are getting bigger and it, it, this, this wouldn't even be able to accommodate two larger vehicles. This would be, like, two typical sized vehicles would fit in that, so. So I stuck with that. Let me know if you have anything you want to discuss, otherwise I'll move on to the many items on here. So planned unit development, open spaces, we, the commission discussed this in, in April. Allowing for the open space requirements to be met with the use of balconies in multi-story buildings in lieu of kind of yard space, private yard space, that was, I put the, I put specific wording into the latest version that basically would achieve that. Some miscellaneous changes, I don't think these are big deals, but zoning district acronyms have been standardized for consistency. Sometimes it was, it, it was R dash one, sometimes it was R one, it was sometimes, yeah, it was things like that. References to use table, table of uses, use charts have all been standardized to the use charts. The word church has been changed to place of worship for more cultural inclusivity. And the next one is, 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 I guess, a little bit important to, to think about. This is the definition of family has been modified to remove limits on unrelated persons living together. This was, I, I don't remember if, if the latest version of the of the state housing bill included a requirement for this, but whether or not it included a requirement, it was discussed and it, it was thought of as, as important and a, and a good idea to not regulate based on the traditional nuclear family. So I would note that the Land Development Code in the past did allow for I, I think it said up to five unrelated people to, to live together. But to me, even that, like, doesn't necessarily make sense. So that, I, I, I just, this latest version took that out. Okay, if you have any, if you have any comments about that, I'd love to hear it now and then.
Sorry, my, the LDC is not loading for me on there, but this is in, I'm just curious of like, what, what's the intention of this? Because I think some of these are pretty you know, they're pretty old.
Well, the older version was, the intention was to to regulate, restrict families to essentially the nuclear family or, or, I mean, I'm assuming that people, if they were generational.
No, but in relation to like what type of uses or
Well, it would.
Where, where this is defined, or is it just defined?
So single, single family house would, you know, refer to that. It might not really matter, but it, it's, it is in there and if it if, if it is a vestige of a, of a previous time, that's, that's not relevant and not needed anymore, I would.
Oh, I don't think it's needed. I'm just wondering, like, why do we even need to define five unrelated people? At all? Like, what's the point of defining who lives where? And that's, I'm just curious and I can't. And it's not loading.
I think it is related to the definition of like a household and a unit. When we count, yeah, wh- wh- when we, when we are trying to define how many units are in a building, there's, there, there are limits to what counts as a unit and what, what is shared space and things like that.
Okay, so, so we're instead of having, instead of defining things by families, we're defining it by households. Okay? I mean, I'm fine with that. I mean, there's more and more multi-generational families or households being created. Now, it's, but yeah, I mean, you've got their household, even boarding houses. What are we, we have a couple. You hear, you list this as daycare slash family care facilities, and I know that we have a few not necessarily boarding houses, but there, with the technical name for them, but they're unrelated individuals living in a building as congregant housing.
So that, that's defined separately, I think. There's like, the boarding, boarding houses defined separately and that, that is not some
I know that we have a family care facility in the city.
Right, and that's, that's right here. I, I don't see a problem with that. It is a different land use in the use chart. But I would consider this perhaps just a, a little bit of cleanup from, to to remove the, the, the mention of unrelated persons. Or, or a limit, the, to remove the limits on unrelated persons living together, as long as they're operating as, as a housekeeping unit.
Why leave in unrelated?
Because it says a family may include unrelated unrelated persons living, living together. So, so we're saying that any, anytime the word family is relevant that, like, that unrelated people can also count as family.
But if you, yeah, but if you have that, wouldn't, couldn't you just also say may include a group of persons living as a single housekeeping unit?
May include.
Right, it does, like, like singling out unrelated means like you're you're saying that there's related and unrelated, whereas it could just be just a group of people.
I mean, that's.
And I'm just, I'm just going down the rabbit hole of if we're gonna like, kind of get away from this nuclear family of like, I'm just going down the rabbit hole of like, why even mention family at all in any of our, in any of the documents, but that's a bigger rabbit hole than I think anyone wants to.
Right, and to me this.
I understand your point. You just take unrelated out and just leave a group of persons living as a single family.
Well, if I, if I may, sorry to be so late guys to jump in this, Patrick.
Hey, Patrick.
So HUD, US Department of Housing and Urban Development does define and use the phrase related and unrelated as they define households and families. So by leaving
I think we fixed.
That's a great reason. Thank you, Patrick. That's a great reason.
Right, I think this would fix the core of the issue without having to upend the whole, the whole LDC. Okay. And while I was on that topic, I had noticed daycare and family care homes were previously not permitted uses in the planned agriculture zoning district, but I also know there's, there's quite a bit of residential development in the, in the PA district with young families in there. Doesn't, doesn't it doesn't seem like there is, there was a good policy reason to to bar daycare facilities and daycare homes from that, from that. So I, I don't know if there's more history that I'm missing, but I, I took that prohibition out in, in this latest draft and made them permitted uses.
Yeah, that makes sense. It, it, it makes more sense to have those uses closer to where people might be working for a living to have those there.
So then on a related note, the for some reason daycare facility, which is the larger version of daycare homes, I think it's like nine or more children. Previously, it was not allowed in the Highway Arterial District. It was allowed in all sorts of other districts, but not the Highway Arterial District, District. Maybe it was, I mean, there must have been some policy reason behind that, but it could be outdated, given that the, the Highway Arterial District now is seeing residential developments and a kind of mixed-use development. So I, yeah, I, I added that in.
That makes, I think that makes sense.
So this next.
Before you move on, okay, so we're, we're, as I was looking at, I looked at what you did. I have my notes just to ask you some questions. As the going page by page, but not my topic, but if we could have the section six 622, instead of having it run like this, have the chart run like this. Six twenty-two, instead of having it run like this, have the chart run like this. It's easier to read a chart like that, like horizontal. So when I looked at it uh in the LDC online and said it would be much easier to read. If it was horizontal. As a horizontal chart versus having a vertical chart, because my computer would not allow me. To change the orientation, because it changed it with as I changed it going right or left. And decided that it was going to be portrait, no matter what I wanted to do. So. Let's make it easier for the user and have that for that, those charts, for that chart only. Have it made horizontal. Going forward, since we're going to be renovating this anyhow, let's do that renovation in our next piece.
Um, I believe there was, there was an issue of fit. With so many zoning districts, it was difficult to put uh. For each use to then have enough space to put all the zoning districts together. Uh we can do some tweaks, we we can try to make this uh a little bit more readable, that this is, this is one of the final touch-up things and I and I can keep this in mind. But I I do think.
Right now, it's a horizontal piece of paper that looks like this, and I'm asking you to turn it. Now, I know that there's a little tweak thing that says flip this after you have scanned in the document. Flip it either right or left. And that's all I'm asking you to do.
Do you know what page it is? I think the problem is when you, when you rotate it on the page.
Yes, yes, that's, we see, you can do that with the paper copy, but you can't do that. We're on an electronic copy. You can, but you've got to be able to tell the computer to do that. But if your computer doesn't want to do it, or you're not adept at telling it to do that, I'm asking, is it possible for us to already flip it?
It it may be possible to make the PDF version. Flip that by default. I don't know if it messes up the printing, but probably people are not printing, so. We will explore that, that is one of the cleanup items. Uh if if it is technically feasible, we will, we will do it. Uh but also, we we want to make sure that's all the uh zoning districts are uh visible together, so.
Right, well, I know, I know right now with the 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 draft that we're working with, it's it's um godly good, okay? And um. I was kind of, I have a question as to that, but I figure it's all godly good with all the other things that are in there that are. In high draft mode, like everything is chapter six. I mean, so I've just said, okay, you know, having things triple X, you know, six Ys. You know, seven Zs, et cetera, et cetera, as it goes on, it, I just said, okay, we're, you know, things going from one. To twenty-two, to thirty-three. And skipping all the numbers in between, I just said, okay, is the context there? That's a cleanup thing. And I'm just asking if we can concentrate on making that particular. Cleanup on this chart and have it supposed to making it last minute, try to think out, how can I have it happen? How can I make it through this? And it's not one of these, we gotta have this done over like like tomorrow. We have some time to think about.
Well, thank you for, thank you for uh the comments there. Chart, I mean, six, section six twenty-two is very important. It's it's kind of the meat of the of this uh of the zoning districts chapter, so. We'll we'll make sure that it's uh as readable as we can make it.
Thank you.
It also depends what you look at it on, like this is how it's showing on my iPad.
Well, I wasn't using an iPad.
I know, but I'm just saying it also depends. So actually, a suggestion I have too. Is you could also just link to an external, a separate PDF that's in landscape mode. Like where it's mentioned, you can include it like it normally is, but then also have a link.
Okay, so. And, yeah, okay, well. Oh, I'm I'm trying to think of the the people who are using this, maybe working on a PC at home. They may be working at a PC in their office, that we want to make it user-friendly if we can. And if we can't, then we just deal with it, other that, and they'll have to tell them they'll have to print it out so that they can read it.
We will try it under uh different situations and different browsers and whatnot. Okay. If we're ready to take a look at the next item over here, it is uh uses not specified in the use table. So, this comes up once in a while, and there there are, there are um current practices that. We have just been following, but. There there is something in the land development code that says that applicants may ask city staff for uh. A determination that a particular use, which doesn't fall under any of these. Uh use chart categories, um whether it is clearly not allowed uh within a zoning district, whether or whether it is a. Allowed, or whether it's similar to one of the uh substantially similar to one of the permitted uh or conditional uses within the within the district. So, but it doesn't say anywhere uh what to do if it is substantially similar. Uh functionally, if we, I can tell you that the, this department has always been treating anything that is, that is substantially similar as. The same as. Whatever that that use is, um and the proposed amendments would just codify that. Um, there's also on a related notes. What, what you do, if a use is not specified in use chart and is not substantially similar. To a permitted uh to a permitted use, um what should you do? It doesn't make sense if there, if someone has innovated and come up with a. Brand-new land use, or something that the city has just never thought about um for for that to. Just be barred for sure. Uh so. After consulting with the, with the. The Regional Planning Commission and some other municipalities, it seemed conditional use was a, was uh the the way to go to make sure there's some review. Um make sure it it works functionally with the surrounding, uh the surrounding uses and surrounding neighborhoods, but. Is not outright banned. Okay?
Is that, when it's reviewed as conditional use, is that a staff review or is that?
DRB.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, conditional uses, conditional uses, I think some. It 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 is a little bit onerous in that you have to go through kind of a site plan process, but. It also should be pretty rare. I mean, I I think there's some pretty large catch-all categories, like retail is like store is like one, is one category. There was one time somebody came and asked whether or not they'd be allowed to set up an indoor uh indoor pools. Like lap pools, like sing, like the the small ones where the water's moving, uh but it's for dogs, but one dog at a time. Uh and that was their business idea, and I'm like, I'm looking at this and like, well. It's it's not specifically on here, but it is similar to one of the, um I think it was like a. It it was like. Medium intensity or or low intensity uh uh retail or something like that, and I. So, yeah, nothing falls, there are a lot of things that don't fall precisely under what's what's on here, and I think what these uh. These amendments would do would be, it would just clarify. How to consider those cases.
Is the substantially similar, when something is substantially similar, that's a staff decision?
That is a staff decision, and that's kind of what it's been so far. Because it's, it always said that you could ask if it is substantially similar. It it already says that. It just doesn't say what you do if it is substantially similar.
So, conditional means what? That it's to be used based upon conditions specified by the.
It is in the land development code, there's a whole section about conditional use review, um and you have to, so the the DRB would have to. Look back into the comprehensive plan and what the intent was of that uh of that uh zoning district and. It has to consider um the compatibility of uses more generally. Uh nuisances, things like.
But conditional doesn't mean temporary, conditional just mean based on certain conditions.
Based on certain conditions, uh but it it's permanent. Okay. So, as I mentioned last time, there are some uh changes that are necessary for consistency with state statutes. Something we overlooked before was that the multifamily three zone. Only actually, it it only uh allowed three units per lot, um but. I never, I always assumed at the MF three zone was going to be a higher. A higher limit, so I didn't even check, but uh now I know it's too low to be compliant with the Home Act. The Home Act requires that in all districts which allow single-family homes, that you allow um up to four complexes, so you kind of have to allow. Four units. But what that would do uh is it would make it pretty similar to the R two district. And that's, that's why we'll, we'll talk a little bit about uh the the density limits a little bit further down. Um, the second item here is just some verbiage in there to talk about the limitations on municipal powers to regulate certain uses. Um like emergency shelters and schools, uh this is really just a reference to uh to state statute, it's it's not. It it's not a major change, it was always, it was always that way, whether I said it or not. Okay, although this list of uh uses that municipalities are limited in uh in how and how much we could regulate. There are more and more things on it. Now, every year with, I I think this this latest bill adds another thing or two, that's uh of state importance.
So, um. The Home Act only applies to MF three?
Uh, Home Act applies to everything, that's, but we've already made the other changes necessary.
Change for this one.
Yeah, this was, yeah, this was something that was, I I I had overlooked before.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so. Here's a big one, this is, this is uh multiple buildings per lot, this was briefly discussed last time. And as a recap, there was a case where. An applicant asked whether or not they could uh under the zoning regulations uh. Renovate their existing garage, the second story of their garage, or add like with within the, within the existing building. Add um a residential unit there. Uh this was a detached garage. And their main building was a duplex. So. We thought about um permitting that as an accessory apartment, uh which could be. That can be separate from the main building, but it wasn't a pertinent to a single-family house, so it didn't qualify. Um, we thought about changing the definition of a of accessory apartment, so that it would, it could be. Added to a duplex. But that's not recommended. Based on the 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 fact that a lot of other agencies already define what an ADU is, including, you know, uh fund uh. Sources of funding, uh they. Um, we we want to be consistent um with the definitions. So there was talk about uh whether or not it would make sense just to allow multiple buildings per lot, because right now you can. You can have an addition. To a duplex, and you can add two more units to a duplex and make it four, and as long as it's touching, it's one principal structure. But as soon as there's a gap and it's two separate buildings, we have to say no, so. Uh that's uh. I looked around at what some other municipalities were doing. And turns out, the town of Essex allows multiple buildings per lots already. City of Burlington now allows two. Uh principal buildings per lot, but each of the. Uh each of the buildings for them can have four units, uh they they basically increase the the total allowable uh units. Uh during the their neighborhood code um discussions. At this point, I I have not proposed that, I'm just proposing if if four is allowed. In one, in one larger structure, four should also be allowed in two smaller structures within the same lot. That's how, that's how the amendments have been written so far, but happy to hear discussion and thoughts.
If I remember correctly, you had changed to be that there would be four units, four units. As opposed to how many buildings.
Correct.
It was four units, because that complies with the home. I'm about to say, if it's got a detached garage, you know, um I've known a few breezeways that get built. Um, so something is attached. Um, I know that's how some people have adapted homes in the past. Yeah, suddenly you have this large breezeway. Suddenly the building is attached to the garage. And not just. But the four units will indeed.
Yeah, so does that meld well with the Home Act? So for, so. In the way we're having it is you could have two buildings, two units each building, or, right? Because that would be.
Here, I'll, I'll just, I'll just throw, uh put this up on the screen right now, the the exact way I've worded it in this draft. So I added a maximum number of dwelling units um per lot. That's four. The Home Act does not require, so that that may be clear, the Home Act says. In any zoning district where where a municipality allows a single-family house, it has to allow a fourplex. You, so, so we're allowed to say they must be in one, one fourplex, could say that. But I think the intent was that, i- if the intent is a, is a creating opportunities to to build infill housing. And it meets the other uh the the other requirements, setbacks, um. Height limits, uh lot coverage limits, which are right now pretty strict, and there might be an opportunity to. To to show you how that's uh. That works right now um in a, in a scenario there. If you fit that, we're still saying as of right now that has been more building, I think the the amendments just allows that. To not be the case.
All right, the only thing I could think of that would throw monkey wrench in would be the fact that you'd have a type. Not that we have tiny homes, but I know that there are people who are looking for tiny homes and. For tiny homes, but they would have to meet the setback requirements.
Well, if you could, so so from a policy perspective, if you could, if there's a single-family house that exists, and you could fit. Three more tiny homes on that property without encroaching on the setbacks. Um, you meet all the sewer requirements and everything, uh and you're within the thirty percent lot coverage limits. Is that good policy um to to allow the? The three additional tiny homes according to this, this revision, um that would be.
So you could have four buildings.
You could.
Yeah.
The the way three.
Yeah, yeah. So.
So this, this discussion we had, this fairly complicated discussion. Is just being covered by that one statement.
It is under that statement, I think. There should be something else as well, uh R two. There were, there's another thing here that says it has been one principal structure, and that would be taken out.
Okay, so the other question is. Individual lot. That refers to what? It doesn't refer to a development site where you have thirty units. An individual lot is not a housing development.
Well, it's, it's just one not, but I mean.
What I'm saying is, is that restrict, just by using individual lot, does that restrict more than four units? In an area that has been approved for multiple units?
Yes, it does, this, but this is in only the R two districts.
Okay.
And the R one district.
Okay.
So in higher-density neighborhoods, uh like along Pearl Street, the highway arterial districts, the trend-oriented developments, the. Multifamilies, that's, this is not.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I think there, there might have be, I might have missed something in the track changes uh version, I, I'll make sure that's uh. That shows up, but there was something here that said um it had. To be uh in one, y- you could only have one principal structure.
I think that was in the R one.
Right, but it, it, it said that even for R two in the original version, so I think that's uh, that may have been.
Since the R one has fifteen thousand square feet.
Oh, here it is, yeah, this part.
So in the higher density zones, there is no, there is no restriction to number of buildings?
In the higher um. Air densities.
Like this, this doesn't exist.
No.
In the higher density.
This doesn't exist.
Yeah.
In the multifamily zones.
I said last time that I'm all for this and I still am, I just, I, I said that I think it's represents a change. It could represent a big change to the landscape. Of the city and I think it's important to have the council onboard to make sure that there's the. Political will to do this, I think it makes sense. But we've seen things that I feel haven't had as much input with the council or they haven't been as clear on what our intention. Has been, and so I was just hoping to have a bit more of a discussion or a dialogue, at least with the council. On how they feel about this change.
Let's propose that we get a group conversation on this topic and, and see when we can need to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and personally, I think like Chris in your memo here, I think you explained the logic. The logic of it really perfectly, it really doesn't make sense that you could make this big building, but you couldn't make two smaller ones. So I think, like, I think you make a really good logical case. I just think it's important to make sure that there's the political will to do that.
So. I think there's, this will definitely be run through council, uh but I think as a planning commission, you. Your recommendations also really matter to them, um and if there's any. Data or any visualization that could help you present this point. Uh planning commission members who are, who are still gonna be onboard uh when this, when this gets uh passed to, to council. I would love to hear it, is there, is there any, yeah, what, what would help? Explain this point and the need for this.
Before, before we answer that, I have procedural question. We've been making changes, post changes to the LDC. So my assumption is at some point, this will go through the council for approval. Right, so what you plan for that?
Why is this?
Well, we've made substantial changes over the last several months, not substantial, but significant. So when would these, all these changes be presented to council for approval?
I am thinking that in, in about. I think we're, we're nearing the end of uh wh- what's makes sense to be in one package. So probably in two or three months, uh I think that, that will be the time there. There, there, there needs to be one big review, especially if there's gonna be new, there are gonna be new members of the planning commission, I. New commission would need to review these, everybody still needs to be onboard, at least the majority needs to be onboard. Um, and there needs to be a report. By the planning commission addressed to the city council and of course, uh staff will help. Draft that report and that's, that report summarizes the reasoning behind all of these changes, what the changes are. And there'll be the red line version, now I, I do think that report. If there are, if there's any analysis or any visualization that helps uh uh better the point. That uh like, that we should be thinking about that and.
Yeah, but the question, so does this specific topic require prior? Submission to the council or just as the package goes in three months, this is included?
It's just the package, so we, we'll have a public hearing to, to do that and then it'll go to the council.
And I was just wondering, this is a topic that needs to be addressed before. Or do we just include it in the final package in three months?
Well, I guess suppose we have an option, I'm either asking council if they'd like to discuss this before they see the packet. Or if they wanna discuss it after they get the packet, so it's a question of how, what. They theoretically have been reading our minutes, so now they know what we are up and process.
They have the, the abilities to send this back to the planning commission for their consideration, they could have questions or they could just. Write it, or, or they could just write any amendments um as they see fit, I, I think. There's, oh, there, there are already multiple layers um in this process. I, I think it would be, I think i- it, the way to do this, in my opinion, that, that, that would be efficient. Would be to come up with what you, what you think is good policy based on. All the background information that you have. Explain that as well as possible to, to council and then answer questions. If they have any.
So, so to be very specific, I'm, I'm carrying the baggage from the rental registry. Which I feel that members, members of the council did not fully understand our intentions with the whole program. And so I'm, my radar is looking for things that the public might get misin- might have misinformation about. And this is something that I buried, that very specifically, I think the public could get out and, and, and get misinformation about. And so making sure that the planning commission and the council are on the same page of what the intention for this is and just. Understanding what it means before public hearing, I think can be really helpful in order to make this work. If, if this is something that the council also wants to ha- wants to happen before it even goes to the public hearing. That's, that's my point.
The rental registry is baggage for me as well, but I'm going back to the first time that this went to the council, the LDC. And that was horribly confusing to the council because the draft was incomplete. It wasn't, it wasn't clearly articulated to the council prior to the meeting. And it turned out to be very discombobulated, so what I'm trying to figure out, is there a way? Not only just for this, but anything else that might be considered. Contentious or an issue that needs to be discussed?
Impactful.
Something, you know, having a discussion with the council before. You know, before um it's more formally presented, I, I'm just trying to get a sense of how this procedure is gonna work. Because it may not be just one topic that's needs some clarification. Might be several topics in here that we don't even, that we're used to, but we're not considering that, it might have political implications.
So if we had a workshop with the city council as to running through this. Or presentation to, official presentation to them, and they wa- walk with us through a draft presentation to them. That would inform them and have them the opportunity to ask us questions. Or compile questions to get back to us, cause they haven't quite figured out how to ask. Or how to put, how do they get that idea down? If we did something of that nature, then. That would probably carry and not have the baggage that we carried from the residential registry. Because the registry, it was obvious that. Everybody was not on the same page with us and they didn't include us when they had the discussion, they had it without us. Um, and that should not be replicated again.
No, I mean, I, I kinda like something like that, but I mean, this is a three hundred plus page document. It's highly complex.
I think, I mean, it could be helpful to, to have, like to single out certain things that we think are gonna be most impactful. And then maybe have a separate document that states our intentions and what, like. What this actually means or what this looks like, like to have that along with this.
So.
Package, packet?
There's, so there's the report that is supposed to be the kinda easier to read version and to go with the report. Like the, the planning commissions report to council. I think in reality, this is also a presentation, it's also slides. It will also be helpful and probably necessary to have. A representative or more, more than one representative from the planning commission at that uh, that initial. Council meeting where, where they see this. And uh I think when they first see it, it is not going to be the public hearing. It is going to be their first look at it. Uh, they, they, they will get to ask questions, send it back, uh ask for more analysis, things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll also say that I think the first time that we did this, it was when you first joined. We were, you know, we didn't have a community development director, I think that hindered us in a lot of the communication with that. It also was pu- was during the, the um. During the separation, so the council was dealing with that and so that the LDC sat there for almost a year. Before they got to look at it, so.
Well.
Yeah.
They were running into deadlines.
Yeah.
Um, and had to do it quickly, so I think that was part of the other part, what caused um some. Confusion is that they, they were trying to, they were up against deadline, so let's not be up against deadline. This doesn't have a deadline because we're not in that eight year period. This is a new set of amendments.
Yeah, I think just proactively signaling out some of the things we think might be. You know, might, they might wanna look a little bit deeper or question or might be contentious, like you said.
I think that's.
Would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, there's a property on, on the market at the moment that might fit your fifteen thousand square foot. Three buildings, property. Few acres at one point in time, I don't know, property's been subdivided, but it's old Dr. Morris's property on Pearl Street. It's up the hill here. The, the main home, I think it has a garage in the back. It's got two or three carriage homes plus some apartment buildings, all on this piece of property, which is a few acres. I think, I don't know, it's been subdivided, I would think it probably has, since I now have a main house.
Sounds like it already has three buildings on it.
Oh, I think it has about five or six, but no, I'm just saying that, that if you're looking for something that, that fits that, does it have three? This one has, yeah, got three.
Yeah, there, there are plenty of uh existing non-conforming buildings that are legal non-conformities. Which with some tweaks in the land development code could become legal again for new buildings. Uh, so it's like, it's a, it's a question of whether or not that, what you, the, the legal non-conforming cases, whether you look at that and like, and, and you. You can say with a straight face, that's bad, that's, that's bad policy, we don't want any, anything like that anymore. Um, or that should be encouraged and that, that should be legalized. Okay, so multiple buildings per lots, um the wording makes sense? Okay.
Yeah.
So then the. Next thing here is density limits of the MF three and the RO districts. So if you look at the official plan, it shows and based on that where the, the zones are. Uh, the MF three and the RO districts are kind of transition zones between the R, the, the. The residential to residential one neighborhoods and the, the city center. They previously allowed higher densities than the residential districts, but not quite as high as the more central. Uh districts, but now with the Home Act. It has ended up that uh, you know, now that four plexes uh are allowed in the R two district. Uh, the, the allowed, the density limits in the MF three and the RO districts are lower. Than the R one and R two districts. I don't see any planning justification for this uh, this unusual density pattern. If these are the areas that are to serve as transition zones and if these are the areas that are more convenient. Uh shorter walk to transits uh and to, to amenities and, and jobs in the, in the city center. It makes sense to me that there, uh that's, they at least allow as much density as uh the R two districts.
Guess my question would be is I don't, I don't know what they graphically or do you geographically look like at the moment? As to how dense they truly are. Um, I'm standing to remember that there's smaller homes opposed to larger homes. Let's say that might be up in like countryside or such, there's smaller. Um, buildings, um smaller footprint. So my question is, is. Is there opportunity for infill other than ABUs in those areas?
And I don't know, that's gonna be a case by case basis, uh I think. The intention of uh the amendments here are to make sure that zoning is. That, that the density limits within zoning are, that's not the barrier, I mean, there, there are, there are dimensional barriers already. That uh, there are height limits, there are, there are setbacks and, and, and there are a lot of coverage limits. And again, this is a situation where if you fall within, if you can design something that falls within those limits. And you can, you can fit more units, uh fit, let's say four units in there. Does it make sense to have, to, to have policy that, that prevents that?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're completely surrounded by, is that R, R two? And then, yeah, it makes sense, they shouldn't, there's no reason for them to be less dense than the surrounding.
I know, but it, but my question, it's, we're looking at this, perhaps we should see if there's. The opportunity, can somebody design it, I'm sure somebody can design it. I'm sure we have the wherewithal and the engine creativity to do that, it's just a matter of do they have the money to do that. But if somebody has the expertise to do it, sure, should we limit them to not be able to do it? Probably not, if, if somebody's creative enough to do it. Can we stop to put four units in an M?
An MF three.
Free area.
Yeah, so right, the, these amendments would basically open up the door to that, it wouldn't mean that it is. Always possible. I ha- I also have to note that the, both of the RO and the MF three districts. Are within the scope of the transit oriented development uh. Planning study, uh so it could change anyway, I, my, I imagine that if anything, the. Uh, the recommendations from that will probably. Push towards the less restrictive and more density side, uh kind of, kind of as an interim solution. Just to make it make sense for now. I'm suggesting that they just map the R two districts.
Well, I mean, for example, you've got. Grove Street, one side of the street is. Um, R two and the other side is MF three or MF two, MF t- three. So they're the same essentially, the same properties on both sides of the street. Doesn't make any sense, they're separated, same with the Royal Street where I live, you know, behind me is essentially the same lots.
Yep.
And I agree with you, and at some point, Chris, the HA and the TOD districts are maybe. Where I thought we were looking at those at some point after we had done with, with these amendments. To actually look into what's going on there because of.
TOD study, that's, that's.
Yes, so I mean, that's in the process of happening, so as when that's done, we have something next to talk about.
Some more revisions.
Yeah, well, that's a matter, that's a, if anybody leaves any open land out there that develop. Um, I mean, right now it looks like we've got a few developers trying to do that.
Yeah, we had a kickoff meeting for TOD this week, that was a really encouraging start, so. More to come.
Yeah. Okay, so in terms of uh the amendments that I've actually. Okay, so in terms of uh the amendments that I've actually drafted out. That's it, that that's all I've got so far. I wanted to add a mention of the Vermont Homes For All and the. The zoning guide, um how that's that's relevant. And perhaps now's. The time to to talk about that. So a while ago, the city. Applied to take part in the Vermont's uh Homes For All Toolkit. Project, this was uh, they they were looking for volunteer communities to to take, to to show them real. Examples of real lots that have, that have uh small scale developments uh potential. And to come up with housing typologies that fit the landscape and that is applicable throughout Vermont. This is a culmination of that. This is fantastic documents uh that that was just recently launched. Uh by the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. And this um. Tool is supposed to help uh small scale developers figure out what they're doing, but also. One big part of it is it's it includes some example uh housing typologies. Uh that will. That will come with pre-approvable plans. So these, they'll have the whole. Uh there there's a, there's a bunch of uh uh different housing types here and and layouts. Uh that they will come up with actual building plans. That will be available to any any builders that want to participate and use them. And they will also come to municipalities to to. To present th- these at some point. To encourage a pre-approval of these designs where where that's uh where pre-approval is necessary. For us, we don't have a building code. It's really zoning that prevents uh. A lot of uh, you know, a lot of housing typologies from uh from being built. And. I think one thing to pay attention to is is whether or not the uh these. These very typical housing typologies are uh can fit within uh within our existing neighborhoods and our existing lots and whether or not. Our our zoning uh bylaw prevents any of this uh from happening. So. What you see here is a is a demonstration of a of what. Uh of scale pieces of these housing typologies I have on. On the screen right now, this side by side example is a, I I I think it's a, it's a three unit uh building. That. This game piece right here. Uh at scale for that map underneath it. This lot is uh from. Bellows Falls, southern Vermont, uh but. It is a pretty typical lot that we might expect to see in the R two district. It's about, I think it's. Seven thousand square feet inside. Um actually, that's just around our minimum lot size. Some of our lots are actually below that. And. This piece here shows what Bellows Falls existing. Zoning regulations with their setbacks leaves for a buildable area. Uh you can see that their existing one unit structure is a is a. It does not comply with their their current zoning regulations. Because it is in the front setback. Uh but the game over here was to try to figure out if there was a a way to add some. Infill housing to this lot. Within the constraints that are presented. So. At that workshop, people found it was pretty difficult with this. When most of it was unbilled. Bellows Falls is now considering uh some zoning bylaw changes that are really tailor made. To allow for missing middle housing to to uh to be added. This is. This is what's uh, what their new regulations would allow, no front setback uh requirements at all. No rear setback, but some side setback to to ensure a little bit of separation between the homes. Uh and with this. At the workshop, it was shown that it was uh very possible uh to fit in. Uh a a an additional triplex in addition to like on top of what's uh that existing building uh took up. And still leave some green space and still have enough space for parking and make this lot work. So there's this, there's this document. I encourage everybody to to take a look at it. I actually have a paper copy if you, if you prefer to look at that. It's got everything from policy to to pro formas. Very good, but it's. Also, also relevant is this uh slightly older documents that's uh that. Was made in year twenty twenty. This is a zoning guide for Vermont neighborhoods, and it talks about. Zoning reforms that would make this kind of missing middle development uh a lot more possible. So I know some of this was thought through uh during the lead up to the twenty twenty three Land Development Code amendments. But. It's like, for the most part, there were uh. More units were allowed per lots. The discussions at the time were to allow up to three units per lot triplexes, but still within one building. And the 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 aim at the time seemed to be that uh to to not change things up too drastically. You know, incremental change, but we're also seeing that with those. With those changes alone, we're not seeing that much uptake. In fact, uh I can probably count on one hand how many. How many permits have been requested for a. For missing middle housing in Essex Junction by small scale developers. Uh most of our housing is being provided, most of our new housing stock is being provided by uh the larger developers on larger lots, and nothing wrong with that, but. I it is perhaps. Uh a miss, an opportunity that has not been uh fully considered. These game pieces are custom made for Essex Junction. Uh for R one and R two districts, uh this is what the M F three uh. District looks like with the setback requirements. It's, you can see it's not nearly as restrictive as the the uh. The old Bellows Falls uh requirements. Uh but there are, if you try to fit the the uh the. Pre-approvable uh housing typologies into here, uh there's, it's still a little bit difficult. My question is whether or not this is an appropriate time. To dig into this a little further and to. To review um some of our dimensional requirements in the uh in in the. Lower density neighborhoods, uh the R one and R two, the M F three. Uh neighborhoods, the R O district. To see if they are really um meeting the best practices for communities that are trying to enable. Missing middle housing in earnest. I know this has been thought about in the past, and that's why I I know there's history behind this, and if there's. If if this been thought through and this and this is the, this is the product that's that. That you think makes sense, I'm happy to leave it the way it is, but I can tell you that the way it is. Is not. Is not leading to that much housing production. Um there's probably untapped opportunity out there if. If we wanted.
I mean, um.
And I will also say the the uh T O D study will look at the main corridors, but. There's no initiative at the point. There's no, there's no separate initiative at this point to. Take a second look at uh at the other neighborhoods, which is what's up. I could do um in the coming months with.
So, so let me, I'm trying to put it in the context of. I live in an R two neighborhood, okay, so I'm trying to put it in the context, so do you. So I'm trying to put it.
Oh, gosh, mine, I, I one sixth of, one sixth of an acre, so you were. Okay, um literally, we're we're uh, it's like Indian acres, you're on one sixth of an acre. And we're, you know, it's.
What I'm trying to figure out is, okay. You can have up to a fourplex in R two. So I'm trying to figure out what that would look like. I I wasn't here for the discussions of the the L D C. I came in after the draft was already presented, so I don't have any idea what the discussion was about some of this. And I'm trying to picture my mind, it had been for a while, I'm trying to picture my mind. What would that look like on my block? If somebody decided they wanted to sell their home. Or demolish their home and put up a fourplex. First of all, the lots are pretty tiny on my street. I mean, mine is probably seven thousand square feet, if that. So I'm trying to picture what that would look like and how that would fit in the neighborhood. So I'm trying to get a sense of. You know, what is the question you're actually asking here? Are you asking? Do we need to change? Some provisions of the L D C for these various zones to comply with. Innovative housing that might take take place in those areas. But I'm, I can't picture my mind what it would look like. I'm sorry, I'm probably a little bit confusing here, but. I'm trying to also figure out what would it look like? Even if you changed it in my neighborhood. Some of the plots, some of the lots won't, won't handle a fourplex unless you go up.
And that's entirely possible, and that's. Most lots will not be able to probably take more than one additional unit, um even if you designed it very well.
Under the current.
Well, even. Depending how 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 many bedrooms you're trying to to fit in and how things are laid out, sometimes it's just impossible. I actually think this, this uh. Th- this game board over here is is one way to to um visualize it. These. Um housing typologies at scale could. Could be visualized on top of our own examples, but I'm saying, I I think the only things that would need to be considered. Um or setbacks. And uh and lot coverage limits, uh tho- those are maybe heights, but probably not at this point.
Yeah, I just wanna thank you. To kind of respond a little bit to what you're saying there, Scott, in terms of visualizing and what this might look like. Uh I'm in favor of homes for all and what this document puts forward, um and. I I'll say I'm a little biased in working for D H C D, and I know the work and the effort and how hard these people put into putting this document together. To make housing um accessible and development accessible. I would encourage you, Scott, to take a look at the document and and read through it. Um with your concerns about what it might look like, because that's exactly what the document is intended to address. Um in a large part, um that. They are, they're putting forward plans and um permitting options and. They're showing people what is possible and how to do it so that it. It still fits the framework of the neighborhood so that it doesn't. Become this monstrosity. Um the examples that they put forward that they selected from around the state um really do. Like this house here, I don't know what, I I can't read it, uh thanks for putting it up, but um quickly, like. It, this might be like a six unit home that is hidden within your neighborhood, that just provided six units of housing. And I don't know, like. And and I think it looks lovely, and I think we need housing and um and and to figure out ways to be creative. So I I hear your, I can hear your concerns, and I would just encourage you, Scott, to read through the document and get a, get a sense as to what they're trying to propose through this. Um I and I will again say that I am in favor of this homes for all and would love to see Essex Junction. Adopt it in in whatever way. We can and uh allow for creative development of new units, of net new units of housing.
Thanks, Patrick. I'm I'm happy to read it. I'm, in fact, I'm very interested. I'm just trying to get a picture in my mind of. What changes would take place? Um I'm actually very interested in innovative approaches to new kinds of housing developments. Um in fact, even the one about the three D printer, I don't know if you guys read that one. This guy's using a three D printer to build small homes and now bigger homes. So. I'm very much in favor of that. It's just, I was just trying to picture my mind how it would look. In the spatial landscape where I live, or what in the neighborhoods where we live. So I'm happy to get involved in this and what it would mean for us in terms of.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Changing the L D C again.
My, my answer to your question is, I think of the best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago, but the next best time is today. So I I'm also in favor of doing this, but spoiler alert for the member update, I'm not gonna be part of the commission when. We do this, so I, but I am in favor of of looking into. The setbacks and adjusting zoning and all of that. My understanding, Diane, you would have more knowledge of this is. This is even previous to my time on the committee, was that there was a lot of pushback on infill.
There has been, cause I think it was the approaches that were taken. And it's one thing when it comes to infill to have it imposed upon you versus having a conversation of how it's gonna happen. And I think the current environment is such, especially these documents. Uh which I hardly do wanna read. Is is having the community become aware that it's more of. No, I don't want him in my backyard, but my neighbor just divided his, they have a lot next door, and suddenly there's a house that mushroomed. So. And that's been the approach in the past, and that suddenly the lot got divided. Well, not all lots are divinable. You know, it's. Unless somebody sells and takes a building down. I'm thinking a lot of spaghetti lots that I know of. At the back, Spaghettis, okay, if they were all put together, then maybe there might be another lot there. Um because the front house would still be on a sixth of an acre, just they wouldn't have that eighth of an acre in the backyard. But a whole bunch of ace put together would suddenly be big enough to have something. Um but then the house of mushroom in the back, so we need to have that conversation as to. How do we wanna grow? Some people don't, some don't want Essex Junction to grow. They want it to remain this village that they've always known. And it's like. Okay, I understand that. Now, now that that's not a reality anymore, how do we, how do we bring those people? Along. Because that's not how reality is going to be. You know, on one hand, you can say, well, I I I don't want this happen, but I can't tell my neighbor not not so. You know, sort of thing. So it's like, okay, you do, you're kind of caught between two places. And then, of course, you have the government saying, well, there's these possibilities if you, if you do X.
I mean, I think that sounds like the consensus is to.
These documents serve as a great conversation starter for those types of um conversations with neighbors as well, because they are so. Grounded and rooted in what does this make the neighborhood look like? Much, much of the verbiage, straight from the fourplex paragraph here. Keeping the building height and massing consistent with historic mansions common in Vermont maintains a character appropriate to the surrounding neighborhood. While providing multiple smaller units. So in that sentence, I hear like. Rooting in the neighborhood charm that everyone would be looking to maintain. So it at least serves as a starting point. We are not gonna be able to convince.
The neighborhood charm happens to be a two bedroom. Or a one bedroom home.
You tell them that more property spreads out the tax base.
Okay, I have no problem telling them that.
No, so so could you, and you obviously will share these documents.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, so this also is a segue to a little bit about what I wanted to talk about in terms of the climate action plan. Because, you know, Chris, we've had a conversation about not having a building code, okay? So infilling and building these. The compatible housing units that fit our zoning requirements. Also leaves out the fact that we don't have, it's like when we tried to talk about the E V chargers, the infrastructure. We couldn't require it because we don't have a building code. We can only recommend it. So the same thing is true for when you build a building now, is that you can't require that you have certain aspects of green. Building built into the code or into the building. So in terms of having this discussion about. This top, this infill, I'd also like to have us start talking about how can we make sure that new buildings. Are actually gonna be climate smart. So that's my bias. Sorry, throw that in there at this point, but it is a bias that I'm trying to bring to the fore a bit.
That is, yeah, I mean, there's some relevance, but like, that does relate to zoning as well a little bit in that multifamily buildings tend to always be more efficient, just because there are fewer external walls. But there, there's more than that, of course. There's, a building code is, I think, central to the ability to, to regulate, I think, the climate friendliness of a new construction.
Yeah. Anyway, please share with us.
Excellent. So great. No, this is, this is a very important direction. I don't have the full history of how the 2023 Land Development Codes amendments came about and whether or not some of these have been, some of these issues have, have been like fully discussed and this, what, you know, what we have is, it was, was the best that, that the city thought was possible. But this is certainly a good time to look at some of the best practices and make sure that we're at least considering. I, we will report back with more and incorporates the the discussion today.
Just my recollection was that there wasn't a desire to even address infill at the time because of the, the previous pushback on it. But clearly, I think,
well, we have to address it. We have to address infill now. Okay, before it was, if you don't address it, then maybe it won't happen. And that's not reality.
Yeah.
Okay, so circumstances have changed and I'm sure those individuals who are telling you how their taxes are out the root. You know, it's like you say, hey, well, you know, if you self-divided your property and, okay, but then like, you know, it's kind of like, yeah, and then yes, you have a house either next door or a new house in the backyard. So there are a few one-acre lots still left with one house on it. Some of them located okay for putting up something else, some of them not so okay for putting something else up. So because they're, because of the location of where they put location, location, location. So I mean, I know that there are developers out there who are looking at some of those lots, they, they in passing, they've mentioned them, which is why I'm aware of them. And so we haven't discussed, you know, what's, what's out there developed. We haven't looked at maps. We've done it quick and dirty on, on review of Land Development Code because some personnel did not want to spend any time on discussing things. We've had some great discussions here, okay, which we would not have had with prior. So it's, it's good to have that discussion out there.
Great. Think we can move on to the next subject?
Thanks, Chris, for that presentation.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Okay. Well, I, I don't know, there, there is, Lexi is still online. I don't know if there's, if you need to ask if anybody has any questions of discussion.
I think if there is a comment or a question, they can raise their hand and online and if you see it raised, we can address it.
I think we're all great. Good so far. Okay. Next item here is Chindon County Regional Planning Commission Board Member Position. There is an opening because Elaine is Elaine's position will be opening up and you're, anyone here who, who is interested in participating in the regional planning context is encouraged to apply. You don't have to tell, tell me right now, but please do consider it's, it's, it's very important and it's, I think it's the regional context for a city, our size is so integrated with the, the surrounding cities is very important.
I'm kind of overrated right now.
Yeah.
We also have to reschedule the July and October meetings. The July meeting is on July 4th. So the options would be, I think one option would be to push it back by one week, so it's July 11th. Any any requests or thoughts?
Well, I will not be back in country until the 14th of July.
Okay.
So if you would like my attendance, you would need to be after.
That would mean the 18th?
That's the Development Review Board meets on the third Thursdays, so that.
Can we do it? Well, it's difficult to move it within the week, isn't it?
It's possible, it's not.
Can we just do it on July 3rd?
We could, yeah. Let's see.
So another sort of procedural question.
It's, I, I'm just checking right now. There's, no. No, it's council meetings are second and fourth.
Okay, the other procedural question is, will I have a new commission as of July 1st, correct?
Yes. So it is weird that the first, right, their, their first meeting will have to be rescheduled. Also, yeah, I, I, I don't, I, I have not heard back about how, I mean, they, they should be appointed by, by the start of July, I think it's a the coming meeting or the, or, or the next meeting where these appointments will happen.
Do we have three positions open?
Two, I think.
Is Patrick open or not?
Oh, Patrick is going to be open. Oh, right, because you're, you're up.
I'm a two, I'm a two-year.
Okay, I, I didn't think about, yeah, no, for sure, your, your position is up for.
So, and, and Patrick.
Yep, so three positions. In fact, if this not, if, if the vacancies are not filled by the start of July, I mean, there's not, there's not quorum. And there's not really any point of meeting without quorum given the, the, this depth of policy talk. It's, it's important that there's at least consensus some kind of consensus among the, the new board members, so we could, if, I guess, Scott and, and Diane, assuming that Scott is going to be reappointed, if, if the third works, I could pencil that in.
I can make it work, how's that?
I can work it, I mean, it's fine with me.
Okay, and the October, I mean, we, we could deal with the October meeting later, I feel like.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
I assume August and September would be the same as they're scheduled.
Yes, it would be, it would be the
First, first Tuesday, yeah.
All right. Moving on to member updates. Do you want to go, Scott?
Well, I, I don't know if Chris might have more on the strategic planning. No, well, the thing I know right now is there is a draft of the strategy. There was an email sent to all of us and all the committees and I wanted to fill out the survey. I'm assuming there hasn't been a re, hasn't been a summary of the survey results.
No, it's, the survey is still ongoing. It is open till the 11th, so next Tuesday, this is open to all department heads and to commission and board members. This is the, the kind of the culmination of all, all this, all this work that's been done so far and feedback to help with prioritization. It is important to have as much input as possible at this point by appointed members.
And the last I heard from Celine, who works for Future Act here, was there was going to be a steering committee meeting, but I don't know what the process is now. If the results of the survey and the strategy are just going to be presented to council or?
Likely that is, well, given that it's going to close the, on Tuesday, that, so this is going to happen first and then there will, I, I, I assume there will be one more meeting at some point. That's, that's my, that's my guess, but I, I'm not actually, I'm on a steering committee, but I'm not.
I thought, I thought maybe, I thought maybe staff would know more than we know at this point, but anyway, so anyway, so if you haven't done the survey, I encourage you guys.
It's not very long, so, I mean, the, the hard part is was reading the, reading or at least flipping through the report, so if you could dedicate a little bit of time to that, it would be really fantastic.
And I won't tell you my priorities.
I, I think we know what your priority is.
Yeah, usually the ones that fall to the bottom of the heap. Anyway.
Yeah, and then my update, just as I alluded to before, this is my last meeting, my term's up at the end of the month. I decided not to reply. Going on? I was planning on just finishing out this term. I didn't realize it was going to be up so soon. I was, when I was notified in May that my term was up, I was kind of surprised. So I would have definitely said it, I'll notify a lot sooner, but that I wasn't planning on returning for another term, but I'm available. If you have questions, if you, about other things, if you have thoughts, if you need anything, definitely available. But just don't have much more time on my plate.
Well, we'll miss you.
Thanks, yeah.
I have to say that when I started two years ago, I relied upon you guys quite a bit. Introducing to what was going on, still learning curve. Good luck.
Thanks. Yeah, I enjoyed my time and I'm open to more time in the future for sure. Yeah.
Or return to something else.
Yeah.
The service.
For sure. Any other member updates?
Fast at you and we are moving to Town of Essex, over by Essex Elementary for a little bit more space for our two boys, bigger home, bigger yard. Yeah. Housing market moves fast and all this came about within the past two weeks. So unfortunately, I will be outside city limits and I think no longer eligible to serve on the Planning Commission. But it's been, it's been a good time. I've enjoyed it and enjoyed.
That, that you can be living next door. So interesting. And yeah, I found that interesting too, that you could be on somebody's planning commission but not live in town.
Yeah.
But should that persuade you to stay?
Well, see, I mean, life, again, as it, as it is with two young boys, one six months old, it's been a challenge these past six months, I'm not going to lie, to to come in on a regular basis, like tonight, for instance. They both got very sick and I can't leave my wife solo with two, the four-year-old and the six-month-old to try and put two sick kids to bed. Stuff happens, but yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll see. But at this point, I'm kind of, my thought is to step aside.
Well, thanks, Patrick. Thanks for your expertise.
We'll miss you as well.
All right, moving on, any staff updates?
Oh, wait, I had the
Oh, oh, sorry.
I wanted to talk a little bit about, so as I mentioned last time, I'm on the Subcommittee for Rural Resilience and Adaptation of Vermont Climate Council. The initial Climate Action Plan was, was approved in 2021. It's good for four years, so they have to re have to approve the next version of it by July 1st, 2025. So all of the, the subcommittees are furiously working on, looking through the enormous number of initial activities that were proposed, strategies and actions, and trying to do a gap analysis on what needs to be addressed in the next and prioritize what needs to be addressed in the next Climate Action Plan. And there's a number of relevant things in here. I'm happy to even go through it in more detail at some future point if you'd like. But several things that are relevant to what we've been talking about. One is surprisingly affordable housing is part of this. And a rental registry was a medium priority activity under the Climate Action Plan, the initial one. There's also a discussion about land use changes with housing. There's also discussion of building codes, since most municipalities don't have building codes. Whether there's a state building code that needs to be enacted or at least recommendations on how the practice, what would you call it, practices that could be applied across municipalities. There's a lot of discussion about weatherization programs, especially for low-income housing and for landlords. And there's a discussion in here also about developing funds to help landlords improve and weatherize homes. So there's a lot of stuff relevant to the things we've been talking about over the last two years. So there will be focus group discussions at some point in the future. But over the next two months during the gap analysis, I have my own ideas about how our work applies to it, but at the next meeting in July, if we, if we have a meeting, I might want to get people's ideas on what would be a priority. So but I'll keep you up to date as we move along. It's a very, very ambitious plan if everybody, if anybody's ever read it. And the detailed analysis of the impacts of climate on the state are pretty staggering. Just nothing.
Great, thanks.
We could be in touch about, I think, a dedicated agenda item for the next meeting if you'd like.
Well, I think what might be useful is to have a 15-minute brainstorm. It's unfortunate that you and Patrick won't be here. Well, I'm not sure I will be either, quite honestly, but we'll see. I've, I've reapplied, we'll see if that works or not. But it would be beneficial to have some kind of discussion at some point about what the priorities might be. For example, education outreach on connectivity to the regional planning commissions and to the weatherization programs, I think it'd be helpful. Especially with respect to land, seeing how it fits with a rental registry or a health inspection enforcement program. So there's a lot of things that could be prioritized from my point of view.
How soon do you need feedback work to still be useful? So let's, if, if July didn't work out, does August still work?
The plan right now is by the end of July, we're hopefully, hopefully going to have, this is just our Subcommittee. There's one on mitigation, there's one on ju- justice and equity. There's one on, there's a data committee which helps the others and there's an ag and land use, or ag and natural resources, I think it's all. So each one is doing their own parts of the plan. Ours is the built environment, pretty much. So it relates to flood, flood, flooding, inundation and so on. The other thing relevant to this first is that the city does not have a mitigation, has a mitigation plan as far as I know. At least that's what I got from Regina a couple of months ago.
Oh, yeah, we don't have our own because it is, it was combined with the town.
Okay, so, and it is a state requirement that you have to have one. There used to be funding available for federal and state. The state, the state hazard mitigation plan has some elements that are similar to what's in the CAP, the Climate Action Plan. There's also now a resilience implementation plan that was announced by Governor Scott and Secretary Pichuk. So there's a lot of stuff happening, trying to combine all this. July and August are supposed to be the gap analyses and the prioritization by the subcommittees. Now we'll go to the council and the council will then, as far as I understand, have focus group meetings throughout the state. So there's an opportunity to get feedback later on. But what I'm trying to do is make sure that I get enough feedback now to make sure it gets into my my inputs to the Subcommittee.
Well,
even if, even if it meant you guys would like to have a meeting separately, we could talk about it.
Let's see if Let's see if July, so I think if the July uh planning commission meeting works out, I I think that would be a great time to. Dedicate a little bit of time to this prioritization discussion, uh, if not. Um, let's set up, if that doesn't work, we'll set up a meeting with you, just staff and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Moving on, any staff updates?
So the T O D study, transit oriented development study has uh kicked off. The. The proposed timeline is uh pretty ambitious, uh, does, uh, the the crux of it is going to be. A design workshop involving uh. Uh, as much of the community as possible, uh, over four days. Right now, the the timeline shows that to be at the end of uh. Of the summer, um, I can imagine it could, it's, it could be possible that it may slip into fall, but uh the. The the timeline would have this whole project uh. Largely done within uh about a year. Uh, the existing conditions analysis is ongoing right now, uh, there will be some. There'll be uh some products that come out of that uh pretty soon. Um, at the same time, we are uh considering forming a a steering committee, a cross functional steering committee with the. Uh, with. Mission members and committee members, um, and maybe a member or two of city count. On board. Similar to how strategic planning was was uh. Uh, was managed, probably front heavy, um, a lot of talk of uh. Beginning, more meetings at the beginning uh than towards the end, uh, you know, more to talk about process, more to talk about. Uh, the, to review the existing conditions analysis, things like that, to actually read the reports, uh. Uh, the drafts. Less to to directly influence the 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 outcomes, because the outcomes are meant to be decided. At these uh, these public events. But yeah, that's uh, that that'll be coming up, um. So if you are interested in that, please be on the lookout, uh. We'll be trying to get cross appointments.
Okay. So the consultants are already working on this?
Absolutely, yeah.
Who are the consultants?
Framework, uh, Jeff Arango. Uh, is project uh manager.
That's right, we picked them.
They were actually second, I think you picked them as a second choice, but the first choice was uh not available. Uh, but it's been a pleasure working with them so far.
Right.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I know we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned. It is eight twenty.